Down here. Call the meeting to order and, Rudy, while you're up, would you lead us in the flag?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk call their own.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Holler here.
Got it.
Present. Yeah, Akeese. See, see.
Oh, packed house.
Okay. Looking for the agenda machine. Okay, is there any comments from the public? Did I have any cards?
I've got to reset my clock.
I've got one card, but it says, "But only if council has questions." So, that's from our friend Russell. He's joining us from the back of the room, ready to pounce when needed. Okay. I guess, city manager, where are we here?
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are picking up on our budget workshop from where we last left off. Want to make sure that we got copies of the CIP out again for everyone's review. I'm looking on the table for the DIAS.
From last time?
Right. If you, does anybody need a copy? If you did not bring that along, we'll get you a copy.
I have it. I just have to find it.
So, we'd like to pick up on that. Does everybody have a copy of what we distributed at the last meeting? If not, we'll...
Which one we want?
So, we had, there's a summary, and then there is a, it's titled, "City of Ojai Proposed Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan Summary." And the other one is, "City of Ojai Proposed Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan by Other Funding Source." And it's a large 11 by 17. Looks like that.
And it was in our last package.
It was a handout, so...
Better get us a couple of copies.
It's being here.
Get a couple of copies. There you go.
I have it. I can share it with you.
Well, I want to... So...
Can we go ask you?
Okay. We'll give a moment for Gail to get that. So, while she's getting those copies, let me just start by saying, so we left off at the last meeting, then said we would be going through the capital improvement fund. This is a rather significant year in terms of what we're doing with improvements planned. We have quite a lot lined up for capital improvements. Of course, what we do is, particularly with the street funding and the street repaving, is we'll typically hit that very heavy every other year, and we save up the funds for a couple of years so that we can get a max, so that we can maximize our returns and do a little bit larger jobs. So, this year, or fiscal year 1718, we're proposing, as I said, doing quite a bit into the capital improvement plan. The big part of that has to do with the road overlay and reconstruction improvements.
What document? Excuse me. What document do you want us to look at?
This is the proposed five-year capital improvement plan summary.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So, for road overlay and reconstruction, we have a total of 1.5 million, a little over 1.5 million. This includes a SGP grant, AB 939, Cal Recycle Rubber, Fund 27, and gas tax, all funding the road overlay and reconstruction. And, of course, that will be coming to council later this month, the actual specifications of that. So, is somebody getting a copy of the CIP? Okay. All right. Yes, sorry, I thought we had gotten copies of that for the DIAS.
It's okay. I'm following along mentally.
Stalling here just a moment.
Is it summary or detail?
So, again, just very quickly, 1.5 in the road overlays, and then under the parks, we're proposing remodel to the restrooms at Libby Park. That's $112,000 project. We have $20,000 in here as a placeholder for bike park. $12,000 to repair and expand the turf hill. That's at the new playground in Libby Park. And then, we have funding split over a couple of years to do a sewer line pump system in Libby Park to address a longstanding concern that we have there, where we have potential for backups and potential spill, and that would be a solution to address that issue there. There's a sewer lateral that runs through the park, and we've identified a way to fix that so that we don't have that risk in the future. Moving on, through, nothing proposed for Libby Bowl in the capital improvement plan next year. For Boyd Center, we're proposing to do $21,000 for repairs to the flat section of the roof, $10,000 towards the purchase of new gymnastics equipment. For Sazadi Park, we have light poles.
Hold on a second. Gymnastics equipment? You said there's some 1718, there's some money?
There's no money in there.
I've got $10,000.
About the $10,000, okay. The steep section has zero, then, on Boyd Roof?
That's correct. Right. We're proposing...
And the $10,000 in gymnastics, okay.
Right. We're proposing to address the steep section of the Boyd Roof in the following fiscal year.
Okay.
So, going back to Sazadi Park, proposed project to replace the field number one light poles, $56,000. And then, this next item would be perhaps the, one of the next improvements to fund of the master plan. I say next, since we already did the shelters there. This would be for an outdoor basketball court and footsaw court. That's actually spread over a couple of different years. $130 for the total and $50,000 for the first fiscal year. So, a lot of that would be for the plans prep and specifications.
Mr. McClary, will the field number one light poles have a feasibility to determine if LEDs are feasible?
Actually, we did look at that, and at least the initial research that we, that came back showed that there wasn't an advantage to putting in LEDs at those fields. A little different there, just a little...
Heard the question had been asked.
It had. However, I think we need to ask it a little bit further. I think it's one of those areas where the technology continues to change and evolve, and there's a lot of different vendors out there. I asked that question, I was a little surprised in terms of the response that I got, that no, it doesn't really look like LED is feasible for that. So, we may check with a few other folks and see if that still holds true.
Can we break the field lights down into two aspects? You have light poles and you have light fixtures. Are we looking at light poles? Or are we looking at light fixtures?
This is light, this is both.
Okay. And so, you're saying comparably, LED lights are not less expensive to operate than a standard?
LED lights takes a whole...
Come up to the...
Yeah, the LED light setup takes a whole new array. It's, you have issues with, if you just put one pole, we're only talking about replacing two poles, right out of something like a dozen poles out there we have, not quite that many. But, so if you just did the two poles and LED, they have an issue with casting the same amount of light as the high-pressure sodium lights.
So, I guess my question is, would we be better off saving for that, so that we could do all poles at one time versus two at a time? Or...
There was another issue, too, is that with LED lights, if you, you have to, they don't cast far enough, you have to, you have to have a back of the field. Since we have a field one and two right against each other, there's no way to put poles in the middle and the back. So, there's no way to light up that center field. The lights won't cast, the LED-type lights won't cast far enough out to get to the center field area. So, you tend to see those in stadiums where they can actually light up the back of the, you know, come off the back of the stadium and light into it.
The reason, the reason for replacing the poles is?
Those are two, the two wood poles, and they're old. And, yeah, decayed and need replacement. Right.
They've got more holes than most oak trees do around here.
That's right. Thank you.
I just ask, as it's changing so quick, have you been, have you been to the Pacific View Mall lately? They just, they does everything LED outside in the parking lot. You know, it's changing rapidly, and I don't want to belabor the point. I'm just saying...
Well, agreed. And we're, you know, we're very much in favor of using LEDs, A, for cost and operations, and it's just, a lot of times, they're just a little more pleasant effect. The issue is, you know, we saw this a little bit with the skate park, too, when they, when they first proposed the LED lights, it had changed quite a bit from the initial concept to what we ended up with, again, because the technology continues to improve.
And we're working with Musco, you know, they're one of the great, best-known light companies out there, and they're really saying, "In this case, just that, those one poles each, it's not going to work to do LED."
So, right now, we're just taking, two poles are being replaced, but all the fixtures remain the same. Is that your point? Yeah?
For these two, be poles and fixtures.
Poles and fixtures.
Poles and fixtures.
Yeah. And I should mention that the new fixtures are about 30% more efficient than the old fixtures. It's just all the reflective technology is way better than the old ones. So...
And the source of the funding on all this is where?
So, if you go to the other sheet, you can take a look at the fund breakdown on that. For the light poles, it's on page two. And that, we have Fund 31, and then the other funding source, I believe, is that we would be seeking, I think, donations.
Exactly. OJ, we're hoping, the OJ Civic Association has shown interest in this project, so we're hoping they'll pay half, and then half would be Fund 31.
So, all of these say other fund. Does that mean other than the general fund?
Other than Fund 31.
Other than the capital improvement fund. None of the funding identified on this is from the general fund. This would all be capital improvement fund. Or, other fund would be coming from either grants...
Yeah.
Or donations, or other, other non-capital improvement or general fund sources.
Okay, thank you.
So, all told, for Sazadi Park, a total of $299,000 in capital improvements for next fiscal year.
When you say placeholder, does that mean some of this budgeting is budgeting, and then that money will be reserved until, you know, some future year when enough money has been accumulated? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the placeholder comment that I made had to do with the bike park, and of course, that's not an approved project yet.
Right. That's my question. That when funding is shown here, and you say it's a placeholder, that doesn't mean it's going to be used this year. It means that that amount of money is being set aside for the time being?
We're proposing that it be set aside for the coming fiscal year, in case we're able to get to the project and there's need to use that money. And if not, we could take, we could, and if it doesn't get done next fiscal year, then we could reconsider then for future years whether you want to continue it and they're not.
Okay. That's good.
I just, can I go back just to...
Yes, sir.
...the park real quick? I just saw that Greg, or are you, Greg, you're going to redo the turf hill? God bless you.
Yes, that's the plan. $12,000 for that.
You had to be part seamstress to figure that one out when I did it originally, and I'm not a seamstress. So, I'm glad, hopefully, you're going to hire someone that has that background, does, knows what darts are and all of the finer qualities of...
We're going to see how the patch holds up we just put in there, but we're looking at going to the nylon, that's slipper fabric that seems to hold up better. That's, pulls on it so hard, it's ripping up. Same time, we pull it down, we go ahead and expand the size of the turf hill a little bit, too.
May I ask what's inside of that turf hill?
A pile of dirt. Just dirt with a little bit of cement to stiffen it up and compact it.
Yeah, about six inches of base.
Non-permeable.
Base, no, actually, we did put an inch layer of some type of carpet foam, some special foam for it.
True, there's a little bit of padding, carpet padding underneath it.
But it's dirt inside.
But otherwise, it's just reinforced dirt, cemented dirt.
A dimple of dirt.
It's so fabulous. It's so popular. I love it.
Is this, is this the second redo on that hill?
Well, the seams have had issues. Yeah, the seams was a...
But did you change material at some point previously? I thought I heard some kind of presentation at the Parks Commission, maybe six months ago, about how it wasn't quite what you wanted.
We're trying to find better seams. We're using a, we had a partial donations of that turf material, and it turns out, it's an unusual thing. You take in a microwave portable box, and you move it along the seam, and it reflects against foil and heats, heats glue up, and it holds it pretty good for lawns, but in that case, it's just too much stress on it. So, we have to go to this other material.
There's got to be 10,000 soil staples in that mountain, I can tell you that. There's a ton of staples on it. Okay, thank you.
City manager?
Thank you. I was just making a quick note. Moving on to the complete streets portion of the capital improvement plan, we have $45,000 recommended for bike trail crossing safety improvements. $40,000 for sidewalk infill. $10,000 for complete streets master plan. Remind me again, Greg, that's for the 10,000 for the complete streets master plan?
That was the assumption that, it actually just last week went through the planning commission, and they seemed to approve and push it forward to the council, so that's planning to come to the next council meeting.
But that specific amount, what is it funding?
It was really in the consideration that there might be significant modifications to the plan.
Okay, so it would be changes to the plan. Okay.
Right.
$120,000 for pedestrian crossing improvements at Whispering Oaks. $112,000 for North of High School Maricopa pedestrian crossing. That would include the rapid beacons. And then, $90,000 for, also at Kenyatta and Blanch, also for the rapid reflecting beacons. Moving down, we have $10,000 for ADA, and this is for implement facility improvements. And then, we have 142, a little, just under 143,000 budgeted for the bike trail bridge at the Fox Canyon Baranca.
Mr. McClary, what's, where's the 123,000 or so in the other fund coming from that that's not part of Fund 31?
So, for the...
On the fun side.
On the ATP CMAC project?
No, the bike trail.
Oh, the bike trail, I'm sorry.
If you look at the funding, only a minor part of it is Fund 31. The major part of it is 122,975 other fund. What is that other?
So, that'd be the grant, correct? Mr. Grant?
CMAC grant and TDA Article III grants, right.
That's a CMAC grant?
Right.
Correct.
And the 142 for the bridge is, is what? Is that...
Is that where the big dip is?
Yeah.
That's for getting rid of the dip. I always thought the dip was fun.
Yeah, me, too.
I kind of enjoy the dip.
I thought that was the bike park.
Yeah, the existing bridge is actually an equestrian. It was originally built as an equestrian trail through that section, so that's why it's got the wood deck on it. So, that's why when you come down the asphalt, you have to shift onto the dirt for a second and get onto the equestrian, then back over to the bike trail.
Kind of enjoy that.
So...
We don't want to take that away from Bill, so we can save 142,000.
It's a grant, so...
Yeah, right. Okay, we can only spend this money.
It's a grant, so...
Fortunately, it'd be hard to transfer anyplace else.
It's a grant.
Yeah, right, okay, right.
You know, they do grants for crazy things, don't they?
Yeah.
It will improve the connectivity of the, of the circulation of bicycles in the town, so...
I understand. I couldn't, I just couldn't resist.
Well, we could slash, you know, put, you know, recreation improvements.
No, move on.
All right, moving on.
Move on.
Happy to move on. So, ATP CMAC project, this is the Ojai Avenue and Maricopa Highway pedestrian crossing improvements. $12,000 budgeted for the program and consultant, 35 for the preliminary design and outreach, $120,000 for the NEPA, which would be the federal environmental analysis, and for the preliminary right-of-way, assuming that's preliminary right-of-way acquisition. And then, a portable speed radar sign also thrown in there. Total for complete streets for next fiscal year of 744,975. Any questions on any of those projects?
But all grants and restricted funds, right?
Correct.
Not completely.
Not completely?
Almost. There's a little bit of Fund 31 in there, matching money. Right?
Yes.
Let's, let us confirm that, so...
Yeah, on definitely 73,000, 35,000, 12,000.
Yeah, there's a little bit of Fund 31 money in that complete streets, right?
It's a pretty fair matching, right? We've got 450,000 approximately in grants and 290 in...
7,000.
7,000 in Fund 31.
Right, right. 297,000, Fund 31, capital improvement plan.
And Fund 31, for the benefit of the audience and me, is what?
Primarily, it's the capital improvement fund, but it's primarily funded with the TOT money.
Okay, general fund money. That was my point. Yeah, okay.
I have a question of Grant.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there, do you need to budget in here for redoing the sharrows on grants, since that's all we have right now? We don't have bike lanes yet.
We can cover that under the street operational budget.
That's all, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have several projects under parking lot maintenance. $30,000 for lower Libby. $25,000 for the park and ride lot. That is the lot on Ojai Avenue next to the skate park. $30,000 for improvements to the public work yard. This would be the upper and lower parking lots. And also, $50,000 for the Rotary Park parking lot. A total of $100,000. Any questions on those?
How much of that is Fund 31?
75,000.
75,000, Fund 31, and $25,000 in grants.
Is somebody already asking a question?
I think we have the answer on that, so...
I have a question.
Parking lots, so, page four of six, revenue, funding source.
Do you have a question, councilmember?
Yeah. If there isn't anything like cemetery, that's just volunteer, volunteers take care of that?
So, on the...
I know it's full, but...
So, this, this...
We're on the parking lot maintenance, and cemetery is at the bottom?
Yeah, but if you reach, if you go to the next page, you'll have cemetery master plan, and you'll see funding in that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
This, this, of course, this would not, the, the funds that would be budgeted for maintenance of the cemetery would fall into the general fund budget. This would be just before capital improvements projects to be done to the cemetery. I know there's long been a desire to do some improvements there. Anyways, and as we get to the end of that, we do want to point out that we do have, well, hold on, I'll hold that thought. Let me, let me get back on track here.
It's a different page. Don't worry.
Okay.
Don't let me hold up.
All right.
This is a little different.
Under facilities, then, we have currently $20,000 budgeted for the gates at the museum, $30,000 for repairs to the chapel roof, and $16,000 for the west section of the chapel roof. And then, we have $20,000 for additional fixes to, or further fixes to the city hall Moving on to the next category in the public works yard, 5,000 for gravel, chip, and storage cribs. Right now, they're just being loosely stored. 5,000 over 5,000 for a new quiet air conditioning for the admin building. 4,500 for a backup generator. 5,000 for the lower yard equipment roof. And then, ah, this is what I was looking for. We have $20,000 for the cemetery master plan. And that would be to take a look at what we're doing there long-term. And then, $20,000 for roof repairs to the police department. So, a total of 146,000 budgeted for facilities improvements. Under drainage, I think we mentioned at the last meeting that it's been a long time since we've updated the city's drainage study. It's last done in 1979.
Will that RFP come to us before it goes out?
We can certainly do that.
I'm just asking if it was, the plot was a plan or not.
Honestly, I don't think we got that far along. We're waiting to see if it got funded, but I think that would certainly be the idea. It's, it's...
I think it would make sense if, for that much money, for having RFP be approved by the council for...
I would completely agree. That would, that would be my recommendation as well.
Can we get a brief update on, on what Greg, what Mr. Grant considers a drainage study update? What's the study? What's the study mean to you, Greg?
Drainage study looks at the whole city's hydrology, hydraulics, so it's looking at the, it's very outdated hydrology, obviously, you know, based on old storm studies and all that. So, now, the newest hydrology is going to show more rainwater more frequently occurring, and so it'll show a lot of the piping. It'll look through all of our analysis of piping and so on, the hydraulics, and see what's undersized, and have a master plan for whenever any piping could be replaced or is replaced, we can upsize it to what's appropriate to help reduce flooding in that part of the area, as well as any private developments. For instance, if you think of the Mallory Way bungalows, you know, they had to connect out to Kenyatta, and there was a, from the 79 plan, a sized pipe that was utilized out there. Be better to have a new study.
Should we assume that stormwater retention and...
Read my mind.
And concerns like that? And are we interacting with the Ventura County flood control regarding some of their studies that they've performed?
A bunch, yeah. They've got...
I think his point's well taken. It should include a stormwater retention, retention potential issue in various forms. That's standard today.
Yeah.
Soft bottoming drainage channels, stormwater aquifer recharge, you know, many, many recharge wells. In other words, that's kind of standard now to include stormwater retention potential, including things like the soil types.
If it was in master drain plan, we certainly could incorporate it.
Because it's trying to keep the drainage water from not just sheeting off, but going in back into the aquifer as much as possible as part of your drainage plan.
Mm-hmm. That'd be in addition to what I was thinking of here, but, yeah.
It sounded more like you were looking at infrastructure.
I was looking at infrastructure.
What, what plumbing is existing? What's the condition of the existing plumbing? And I think what council would like to see is, what else could we do in conjunction with that to actually start looking at recharging, retention, and capturing as much of this water as we possibly can? So, that's our future.
Yeah, that's part of drainage now.
Right. I hear you. It seems like that would...
That's part of the code for private property development.
Right. And that's where most occurs.
It'd be part of the responsibility for the public agency to look at it the same way.
Right. There are new requirements. So, I guess we could supplement the amount of money. I mean, I think it would increase the scope of the work that's being proposed.
I think that's why we don't want to look at the RFP. We don't need to change the money now.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll need to look at that, be very conscious of that, then when we bring it back to council. Council will have an opportunity to look at that before it's issued. So, moving on then, under, also for drainage, we have $20,000 for video inspection for the drains. And Greg, you have to help me out. You look at these acronyms over and over again, they start to become alphabet soup. I know CB means catch basin, and for life of me, I can't come up with what CMP means right now.
But all the pipes are either CMP corrugated metal pipe or RCP reinforced concrete pipe.
Okay. And where are those? Those are all of our drains, then? This is to do...
Corrugated metal pipes, a lot of them installed back in the thirties through fifties are having major corrosion issues with them.
Have we had a twenty-five thousand dollar problem at the east end of the arcade?
Yes. That is potentially that cost. We're trying to get cost sharing or coverage by Caltrans, but it's that huge puddle that forms across the whole crosswalk at the curb between...
That's why I was like, my question, so state highway?
It is state highway, and they have not been motivated to change anything out there.
Not been motivated, I guess.
Yeah. So, we're hoping to get them...
Let's try... Can we motivate them?
I think we can design it for them, and then that'll push it along, yeah. If we design it for five or seven thousand, I think they will do the work.
We'll see if we can provide some further motivation. Yeah, twenty-five thousand for that improvement. So, a total of one hundred and fifteen for drainage improvements. Then, moving on to transit. Fifty-six thousand for electric main gate and fencing security. That's at the public works yard. And then the two new trolleys, and that's under Fund 23. Greg, do you want to briefly talk about the two new trolleys?
Right. We've got complete funding on those. There was Proposition 1B and Fed, FTA, fifty-three eleven covered the other part, about two-hundred-and-ninety thousand. So, we've got the... I think it's four-hundred-and-sixty thousand total. So, we'll have two nice new trolleys. Unfortunately, they won't kneel or lower. There's nothing being built in those models right now, but fully covered, no match.
And then a little over forty-one thousand dollars for a washdown pad. Again, this is at the public works yard for the trolleys and...
Does that include a clarifier in that washpad?
And then the sound wall, which again is to provide some sound barrier for the neighborhood, for the trolley operations, the backing up and the leaving and the refueling, and create quite a bit of sound, and that impacts the surrounding neighborhood. And that was a recommendation that came out of... There's somebody that had... Greg, help me out here. There was... We had looked at that a couple of years back because of the sound... Because I had asked you specifically where the recommendation for the sound wall came from.
Primarily, it was a grant that we were going to put roofs over the trolleys. And then, working initially with a neighborhood, there was concern about the block of views. And we worked with Gold Coast Transit District, which provided that grant money through VCTC. And they were okay to flip it to a sound wall, which is what the neighborhood was mostly concerned with.
Is that considered gray water on the washdown pad?
It never made into a pipe, so it's before it gets to a pipe. But it, right now, is going to an infiltration trench, so it's somewhat of a same concept, yeah.
And that's all coming from other fund sources. They'll all be coming from grants, then. Everything that we have listed there under transit for Fund 24, that one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of improvements, none of that is coming from Fund 31, the capital improvement fund. And then, I believe, the last thing that you'll be seeing on your sheet is the capital transfer to Fund 33. Fund 33 is the Equipment and Vehicle Replacement Fund. That is the recommendations... Wait a minute. There's something here.
Just a note on that last item, Steve. We used to have the vehicle replacement in Fund 31. And two years ago, we decided that we were going to split that out and put it in Fund 33. So, we transferred a portion of the... What was the balance in Fund 31 into Fund 33. This is the remaining portion after we figure out what the final numbers are that we have to get over to that other fund. So, that's what that is. It's just staying there.
Councilman Hane had asked for an equipment list?
Yes, we have that. We'll be distributing that.
Thank you, Bill.
We'll be distributing that right now. The last page, just while that's being handed out for the summary on the capital improvement plan, is the revenue source summary. So, you can see for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, we have six-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars that would be coming in from TOT revenue, fifteen thousand dollar transfer...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Everyone's pages were rattling.
Yeah, what are we...
Could you start over?
I'm sorry. This is on page four of the summary. It would be the backside of the last page. Oh, did you not get copied?
I don't have page four. Okay. So, briefly, what you were talking about is I see the Fund 31 and other funding for seventeen eighteen. I have those two numbers, and I also have your end total of three million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand. And you were talking about something else related to those three numbers? Am I correct?
So, I was... Yeah, I was just about to go through the summary of the revenue sources.
Okay.
So, we have six-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand from TOT, fifteen thousand dollars transfers in. We have one hundred and seventy-five of that is coming from AB-939, which is a deferred revenue. One hundred and fifteen from the drainage fund. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand from the gas tax fund. Forty-eight thousand from traffic mitigation fund. Seventy-nine thousand, five hundred from the recreation fund. And one hundred and thirty-eight thousand from miscellaneous funds. So, total transfers is just under a million. And then, we're anticipating sixty-five thousand, five hundred in donations. And then, the remainder would be grants. TDA Article III grant, the CMAC grant, and the Prop 1 B grant, which we talked about a little bit earlier. So, a total revenue of two thousand, three hundred and sixty-three, seven hundred and forty-two. As you will probably correctly noting, what we're proposing to spend is a lot more than what that fund is, and that's because we're spending down the accumulated fund balance in the CIP. And at the end of the year, that fund balance would be projected to pretty much get down to zero. I think it would be about eleven thousand, if I have that number in front of me.
Steve, there's a little bit of confusion here. The handouts that we're giving out today not include the revenue. It was... It's on the one that was handed out last week, but not the one that's here today.
Okay, I apologize for that.
So, those that are looking for that, it's not because you can't find it, it's because it's not there.
Like I said, my sense of where we are is I have Fund 31, and I've got one million, four hundred and forty-three thousand of total funding in that column. And I've got in other funding, which is what you were explaining, was one point... One million, six hundred and thirty-one. Correct? And so, in capital improvement funding total, that's what I was looking on in proposed five-year capital improvement plan summary. If I added those two numbers up together, I should be at three million, one hundred and fifty-one. Am I correct?
No, I agree with that.
So, that's our end number. These are the two... This is Fund 31, which is general fund money, and then we have other funding. Is that what you were explaining?
The revenue that... The schedule that Mr. McClary has with the revenues on it, it actually breaks out the different funding sources, what portion comes from TOT, what portion comes from fund balance, what portion is coming from different grants and things. But basically, yeah, I don't...
Bottom line, are these numbers?
Right.
Okay.
And the bottom line you're looking at is on which sheet?
Well, you... I think you guys have last week's sheet, and I have this week's sheet. So, therefore...
Right. Last week's sheet had the revenue on the back, so...
This sheet has nothing on the back.
Well, yeah. Mine had something on the back, but are we... Is it the same thing as the new sheet, or is there...
No, that's the...
Ah, sheet.
Those... No, it's the same... They are the same numbers. They are the same figures. We did not change this in between when we handed it out last week and today.
So, is page four of what we had last week, what Randy's been looking at on the new sheet, is that correct?
I'm not sure what you have there, councilmember. I apologize.
There's... Most of the numbers are the same from the last time. Mr. Grant told me that there was a small change in there for the AB-939 balances and transfers that were coming in, but the numbers are substantively the same numbers as we had in the prior.
Eighty-nine thirty-nine refers to what?
AB-939, that's environmental funds that come from the waste haulers that we're able to use for various projects. We use them for rubberized asphalt when we're working our streets plan. It also was used... It was also used to purchase the trash and recycling receptacles that we put out throughout the city last year, picnic tables and those things.
My question is, is on this sheet, were you referring to something or just talking about something that's not on the sheet?
Well, they... It's not on the one that was handed out today. It was handed out last week.
Okay. I'm just trying to find...
And those numbers were modified slightly.
I'm right.
I don't have... I never got a copy of that, so I don't have it. Okay, I see AB nine...
It should be on page four.
Yeah, the total AB-939 funding going into the capital improvement plan for seventeen eighteen is one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Of course, with the... We always bring you a five-year plan, really with the idea that we're going to be spending in, obviously, in the next fiscal year. But we always go out several years as well. Of course, we're not committing to that in particular for the next funding year, but it at least gives us a look going forward. Did you have any questions on the years going out after seventeen eighteen? Would you like any further detail or analysis on that?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, if I could. Where on here do we see the land purchase for two hundred thousand? Isn't that out of a capital improvement fund?
Yeah, it doesn't show on there because this is the seventeen eighteen and forward. And that's actually coming in the sixteen... That's in the sixteen seventeen.
Okay, so it's being accrued?
Yeah, so it's actually... It's actually... We... It's in the budget for this year, and once those expenditures go out, then that will actually show up in the current year. And if it somehow got pushed off until after June thirtieth, then we would move that budget money forward to next year to cover that.
Okay.
Assuming that the item that's being discussed in council today is, you know, move that forward, so...
Right. So, the money, the two hundred thousand, is already budgeted for in the fifteen sixteen or sixteen seventeen budget?
Correct.
Correct?
And we have a column labeled sixteen seventeen. Why is it not showing there?
Because it wasn't in the plan when it was adopted by council. It would have been added in after the fact. So, we need to add it in there and get it into this revised one.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, my next question is that a lot... So that I can get this in my mind. A lot of the capital improvement funds have to do with matching funds. So, if we have a grant, we need to match it in order to get the grant money, correct? So, if we're taking that money from transient occupancy tax, is that where it has to come from? Does it have to come from transient occupancy tax? Because I'm confused is we're saying we need to utilize the payment on the redevelopment loan to balance the general fund, but we're taking general fund money to match capital improvements.
Actually, we're not saying that. And as I will... We're not recommending that we use any of the RDA repayment to balance the general fund. But then, and I will be happy to show that as we go through the adjustments that we made from the last budget workshop.
Okay, so between last week and this week?
Right.
We've made an adjustment, so we're not going to use that money?
That's correct.
Okay, so where's that money going to go?
It'll go to the fund balance for the general fund.
Okay. Yeah. That was all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Good question. Okay, where are we?
Any other questions on capital improvement plan? If not, let's move on to the next bit of information that you have. You should... I know I put this on in front of each one of your chairs, so it should be there. It looks like this. It's eight and a half by eleven, and it's titled City of Ojai Fiscal Year Seventeen Eighteen Budget Reconciliation from Six, Six, Seventeen Budget Workshop to Six, Thirteen, Seventeen Proposed Budget.
You have two?
Yes, I do.
Page one of sixteen.
We need to do it in different colors.
Ah, indeed. Right. So, I handed that just right before...
What they did is they got...
Ah.
Because we're so close to one another?
Yes.
There you go.
There you go, okay. Has everybody found that?
Not me. I'm still looking for... There it is, okay. It's an Easter egg hunt. Yeah, great.
We'd like using a lot of different colors. Unfortunately, the color copiers cost us a significantly higher, you know, per copy costs than the black and white.
Maybe we could put it on a colored sheet.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. So, this shows everything that we've done. These are the changes that Rudy and I worked on from the budget from last week to this week, and we're to get this balanced. So, we've made changes to revenues as well as expenses. So, allow me a moment to go through these. We made adjustments to the property taxes, and the... It was a positive adjustment of one hundred and forty-two thousand. The big change there was in the RP-TTF residual distribution. That has to do with the... How the final adjustments are made with the receipts on the property tax. So, it's a bit of a complicated number to arrive at. And as the finance director took a further look at that, we determined that we were able to up that rather significantly. So, that was helpful quite a bit. So, that saved quite a bit there. However, on the sales tax, we made some adjustments to that based on the actuals that are coming in. That one's a difficult one to predict because they come in a couple of times of the year, and I think the most recent one came in as recently as May.
Yeah, the sales tax numbers are actually delayed a quarter. And so, they advance us money. And then, in the end of the quarter, we actually get the final numbers in the true-up. So, as of, you know, right now, we've actually only received two true sales tax reports. The third quarter sales taxes will actually be coming to us, and we should be getting those sometime later this week.
Third quarter of 2016?
That would be the December thirty... The December thirty-first quarter end?
Of sixteen.
No, twenty... December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Yes, correct, sixteen.
Sixteen, right.
Yeah, the December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen numbers. We... Those are delayed, and we will actually get those about June fifteenth or somewhere this week. And then, the final number, we don't get until actually in September. So, it makes it a little bit difficult to project out the sales tax numbers. The state advances money, and we do the best we can. The numbers... There could be significant swings in sales tax because of that delay, yes.
Okay, so in the intervening seven days since the last time we saw this, we went and revised the revenue side rather than the expenditure side?
We did both.
We revised both. Actually, there were... We've received updated revenue numbers, and I actually looked at our revenue receipts through May thirty-first, and I've used those as a basis for updating some of these revenue numbers that we have in the budget. Previously, the... We were using numbers that were, I believe, were March thirty-first because at the time the numbers were prepared, that was our best number. So, I've actually updated it. And so, these are the numbers. That's where the RP-TTF, which that really... What that is, is that's property tax money that was previously going to the redevelopment agency, which now because of the cessation, the termination of the redevelopment agencies, that's now coming through to the city and to the districts and others that would have, you know, that it would have gone to had it not gone to the RDA. So, that's starting to increase now as time goes on. And so, the numbers have come in fairly... The payment that we received in May for the April property taxes was significantly higher than what we were anticipating. And that's the biggest adjustment there that we have to those numbers.
Made some minor adjustments to franchise fees. We did move the transient occupancy tax up about forty thousand. Licenses and permits, some minor changes there to the positive twenty-one thousand. Minor changes on fines, forfeitures. Revenue from other agencies. We identified some additional funds that are supposed to come in through AB-939, the fund that we just recently referenced. That's plus thirty. The big change in the revenue was that we took out the RDA loan repayment. This was the figure that Councilmember Blas was just referring to. So, we've taken that out of the revenue side. That was a large chunk to address. That was three hundred and eight thousand dollars in anticipated revenue. So, what we were able to do between the adjustments, once we took out... Once we backed out the RDA loan, but then with the other adjustments to the revenues, instead of going down three hundred and eight thousand by taking that out, we only went down two hundred and thirty thousand. So, if you will recall, we were about seventy-five thousand to the black when we brought the budget to you on last Tuesday. However, that was seventy-five thousand to the black, counting that three hundred and eight thousand dollar payment. So, once we took that out and made the other revenue adjustments, we still had to come up with... Well, you'll see here, we had seventy-five that we still had to work with, so we had to make that... Had to make up that difference with the two hundred and thirty that we still had to produce in revenues. So, we still had to cut over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses.
Mr. McClary, are things like fines from citations like short-term rental violations, is that under administrative remedy fines?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I had one question, too. I know we went quickly over the franchise fees, but were we receiving a franchise fee from Golden State?
That is correct. We used to receive about sixty-five or sixty-eight thousand. I don't remember the number.
And so, with a new organization with Casitas, we're not receiving that fee?
That is correct.
And how did that come about?
Maybe an update would be in order on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Summers, I believe, is going... Is doing a review of franchise law as it applies to our situation in general.
Okay.
And will be getting that review to us, I believe.
That's correct.
I expect to have that analysis completed this week.
That's correct. I expect to have that analysis completed this week. As of today, with the close of the deal as of June 8th, The position between, that Casitas has taken is that there is no franchise agreement, and there's no money for us.
Correct.
We're looking to confirm whether there's some room in that. And that, I expect to have that analysis completed this weekend out to the council.
What the general situation, not with a particular franchise agreement, but franchise rights in general are.
Right. So
Correct? Yeah, in other words, whether the city still has the power to require a franchise post-purchase by Casitas. That's the question I'll be answering, that I haven't answered yet.
The question you're going to answer is, is Golden State received those franchise rights from the previous franchisee that we had negotiated with, am I correct?
Yes. It was with Southern California Water Company that Golden State then bought. They stepped into this.
So then the next question to me would be, who negotiated the release of those franchise fees with Casitas?
Or Councilman Hane, there's, there's some issues there in terms of the language of the Ordinance 382 in the 60s versus, that was passed, the interim versus private versus public corporations. So I'd advise we wait for the
Great, okay.
There's a number of issues here that are, are kind of interesting.
Okay.
And they don't involve just money, but also what goes into franchise agreements like performance standards and things. So I think we're going to get a briefing on the general situation.
Yes. We're working on putting that together. And again, I expect to have that done this week, but I wasn't able to get it done for tonight.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
The good side of that whole deal is I have gone back, and I was able to go through, and we analyzed the water bills for the last 14 months. And we looked at each individual, each individual water bill, and we applied the new, the rates that we're expecting on, from Casitas. And I was surprised that the actual increases, or the decrease is actually more favorable than I was anticipating originally. We did, I originally, my staff had told me that was like $58,000 of water expenditures for the year. It was really more closely to, closer to 88,000, almost about approximately $90,000. We've gone through, and the, the rate structure is very different because they place us into a, a commercial rate rather than residential. And so we don't have the tiered structures that we have. They have a flat, they have a flat water, a water rate for commercial members. And then, then you have, of course, you have the different meter fees that come in. The short of it is that I'm, I'm anticipating that we're probably going to have about, up to about $40,000 a year roughly in savings. It might be a little bit more, but there Since we haven't got the actual bills, I'm not sure exactly some of the other things that end up on there, but just looking at the meter, the metered water and the meter rates themselves, that's what I'm projecting right now. So we are going to be, it's a little bit higher than I thought it was going to be. So we are recouping, we are going to be recouping a portion of that. And that's part of the adjustments that were made from last week to this week in the budget.
So we're recouping roughly two-thirds of the franchise loss, is that right?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Okay. And, and are we making payments on the bonds, or is that?
The city's exempt from the bond payments.
Okay, so
As are the other governments, state, federal, county.
So you add that advantage in, and we're ahead. Just, you're, you're rolling your eyes.
Well, it's like saying we're, we're ahead because we didn't have, we lost, we have a cost that we're not bearing, but that's not necessarily making us ahead. It's something that we, you know, we, we hit, we're losing money on the franchise fee. We're saving some money on the rates. Now you could say, well, if we impose the cost that we really don't have, that doesn't necessarily make us ahead. That's why I roll my, why I have that expression.
Okay, you're right, okay. Yeah, just a translation of
Yeah, yeah.
Accounting roll your eyes versus political roll your eyes.
It wasn't meant to be a rolling of the eyes. It was meant of my brain clicking in the gear and trying to think that here. Not rolling eyes, no disrespect or anything.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. And so, yeah, the, the water savings is a, is a good portion of the, the total savings that we were able to identify here. We, we came up with $157,000 in expenditure cuts to be able to, that and combined with the changes in the, in the, on the revenue side, Gets us basically to a balanced budget where we're projecting $600 to the black with this. So very briefly, on the expenditure side, we were able to make, we, we found about $40,000 that we could cut from the planning department. We had some, some double counting on staffing allocations there. We also were able to make some reductions. Again, we had some, some double counting In the Public Works Department and some areas that we were able to trim a little bit there.
Can I clarify that real, real quickly?
Please.
What, what happens, we, we, the Public Works Department is responsible for things in the general fund as well as in other, other funds, the arcade fund, the street lighting fund, and also the cemetery. And when he says double counting, we had made the allocation to those funds, but I had neglected to reduce those from the general fund. So those actually came out. There were no adjustments related to that in the planning department. So I just want to make, clarify that. It's only in the Public Works.
Thank you. We made various other adjustments throughout the divisions, again, to try to get this to completely balance. And I'm happy to go through those. It's quite a bit of detail. And I'm happy to answer any questions or any specific points that you would like me to highlight.
And I will note that the, the current numbers include a COLA that we had proposed, as well as bringing most employees to a 40-hour work week.
That's correct.
Say COLA proposed, you mean 2%?
That's correct. We proposed a 2% COLA.
This has a 2% COLA in it.
That is correct.
And a, a major number of employees going to 40.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. And, and I also have the breakdown if, we can talk about the COLA percentages. The total COLA at 2% is about a $44,000 increase.
Okay, I, it seems like we only have three minutes left, and we're not going to decide anything in this workshop. So why don't we call this to a close and transition to the council meeting, and then we can pick it up later.
Thank you.